Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, March 27, 2023, regular meeting to order. A few comments before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. First of all, I know that there are many people who wish to comment this evening during period of citizen comment. So what we are going to do is cap the citizen comment at 30 minutes at the first one and 45 minutes at the second section because we do have other business to intend to. While individuals on both sides of the issue may be passionate, I'd remind everyone to be respectful of those speaking. If we have individuals with opposing viewpoints desiring to speak, I would ask that we kindly take turns so that we have an opportunity to hear from all viewpoints. And I would just ask that you keep the clapping to a minimum as that will be a running clock and I want to be respectful of those who do wish to speak this evening. If we do fail to follow those rules, I will call for a recess. And then if there is a failure to further do so, we will move on from period of citizen comment. So I'd hope that everyone can be respectful of one another as they come up this evening. Second off, we did have an executive session this evening to discuss personnel. And then, as was mentioned at our last meeting, we also had on last Monday on March 20th, we had an executive session there to discuss personnel in a legal matter. And so again, I just wanted everyone to be aware of those things. And with that, if you would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Martin, roll call, please.
Allison, here.
Crane, here.
Grothie, here.
Guth, here.
King, here.
Milston, here.
Rick, here.
Strickler, here.
Thurman, here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Moves on to number four, approval of board agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the March 27, 2023, regular meeting agenda as presented.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any objections? Again, seeing or hearing none, 4.01 passes. We'll now move on to number five, acceptance of minutes, and we will take 5.01 through 5.06 together. 5.01, it is recommended that the minutes of the curriculum committee meeting of February 13, 2023 be accepted as presented. 5.02, it is recommended that the minutes of the board policy curriculum committee meeting of February 13, 2023 be accepted as presented. 5.03, it is recommended that the minutes of the planning meeting of February 13, 2023 be accepted as presented. 5.04, it is recommended that the minutes of the finance committee meeting of February 22, 2023 be accepted as presented. 5.05, it is recommended that the minutes of the regular meeting of February 27, 2023 be accepted as presented. And 5.06, it is recommended that the minutes of the board policy curriculum committee meeting of February 27, 2023 be accepted as presented.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on any of these six agenda items? Okay, any objections? Seeing or hearing none, 5.01 through 5.06, all pass. That now moves us to number six, our treasures report. Ms. Guth.
Okay. Excuse me. The treasures report, which mostly just deals with the cash flow situation and where the cash is invested. We had a beginning cash balance of $28,293,871. We collected $4,423,562, which compared to last year, at the same time, we had collected So we had lagged behind a little bit, and I had talked in previous meetings about the fact that there were some timing differences, but we have pretty much caught up at this point with the local collections, which is thing that's variable. The state and the federal monies are guaranteed. They're already budgeted. They just come in on a schedule that is determined by the government. So we know we're going to collect all of the revenue from the state and federal. And the local ones have caught up. So now we're fairly certain that we're going to have successful budget revenue collections for this year. Expenditures for this month of February, $6,871,553. Prior year, same timeframe, similar level of budget. We had $101 million as budget last year, was $8,492,818. So we're still doing better this fiscal year than we did the prior year in terms of cash. The ending bound, $25,845,880. And you can see there where that money is housed and the interest, those are the interest rate returns in each of those investments. We're limited in where we can put that money by state mandate. Capital reserve, we expended $113,000, rough number, with a balance of 953, but we have a number of projects and according to budget, that balance will be reduced significantly as we fulfill all of the projects that are being done, that are necessary for all seven buildings to be functioning the way we want them to be. So at this point, as this says, they're $25,845,880. Last year at this time, there was $21,104,833. So cash-wise, we are in a position where we thought we would be. However, we do have some areas of expense that are of some concern, primarily the increase in monies we're spending for special education and cyber education. Those two areas are troublesome. We have no control. It's about which children are needing the special services. And so we're monitoring that closely and are adjusting projected end of year performance as well as future budget numbers, which I'm sure Mr. Strickler will talk more about in the finance committee report. So having said that, I just request that we approve this report as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Guth. I'll take that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Guth? Okay, any votes in opposition? Seeing or hearing none, 6.01 is passed. Thank you, Ms. Guth, for that report. And now moves on to number seven, superintendent and board secretary correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. King. Since last board meeting, we have had 11 contact the board. Of those 11, 10 have been responded to. One came in today, which represents the loan that has not been responded to, but we will respond to that shortly.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Dr. Aiken? And I think there was also a spinoff on that. So there were one or two that came in today, and so yes, we will be responding to those. That now moves us to our administrative reports, 8.01. Dr. Aiken.
Yes, so I would like to just take a minute and thank everybody for coming out tonight. As we talked about this, I thought maybe I could just lay some context to where we are, how we got here, and where we're moving forward. So I'll start with how we got here in reference to the book discussion. So September 26, 2022, we received an official challenge in writing on three books in particular. And some of this first part, what I'm going to talk about is just a recap of what I've already shared in two different community communications. And so one of the things that we did was immediately looked at what policy we have in place and what administrative regulations we have in place. We'll be the first to tell you, as we discussed tonight at 5 o'clock, that it wasn't necessarily neat and clean, but we took the best information that we had and attempted to follow a process. I was not the superintendent here the first time we went through this, but I can tell you, I'm not casting aspersions or stones, but there was no process that was followed the first time through. So we said, if nothing else, we were going to follow a process this time. Now, is it a foolproof process? No. And that's one of the things that we talked about tonight was some of those limitations of that process. So we went through the process, ultimately resulting, over the course of five months, to have three books, excuse me, two of three books removed. So as I talked about, some of the lessons that we have learned, and we have learned quite a bit, I would say over the past three to four weeks, we have spent considerable time reflecting and growing from this, and we will grow from this. And that's what I would ask for, is grace and patience as we try to get this thing right. There's no playbook for this, but what I would tell you is, is this is not unique to Central York. This has happened all across the country. But I would tell you that there's close to 6,000 kids that are looking to us as a community to see how we can come together. And I thought the board did a fantastic job tonight of starting to look at some of those ways that we can come together. So I had told you about some revisions we were going to make to a board policy, and then we come to find out tonight at 5:00, and I'll figure out a way, we'll come out with a way that we're going to communicate this to the entire community. But one of the things that we talked about was just simply a library resource material policy. So whether it be 109.1 or 109.2, but that's going to be the next steps that we take. In conjunction, as that's being written, the administrative regulation, we will work on in conjunction with that as we work together. One of the things, couple of the things that we have really learned from this, obviously is a committee structure is important. Who is on this committee? I had shared earlier tonight, my greatest concern is this with the committee structure. And we in particular talk about the book Push, because that's the one that has garnered the most, I would say skepticism. And my concern is this, is, you know, and I outlined in my communication last week, that the independent reading was the one that people had issue with, that just said, hey, if a student picks this book up and is reading it on his or her own with any kind of, no parent parental oversight, there would be some concerns. And that's my concern is, is we look at a committee structure, we didn't have a social worker, we didn't have a counselor on that committee. In hindsight, it would have benefited us exponentially to have that type of person on that committee to say, yeah, I think this would be good for a kid to read, or no, it would not be. So we're, again, we're going to attempt to make this right. And obviously, the transparency piece is, I pride myself on being an open, transparent person. We're going to work to get better, absolutely. But what I would ask is, is we as Central York, can we come together as one? I think this board has done, I don't just say it because I work for these nine, but I think this board has done a remarkable job of, one, trying to get these policies right. They have gone back to the drawing board almost ad nauseam. But just last month, they met with a group of teachers to say, hey, seeking first understand rather be understood philosophy. And even tonight, taking a step back and saying, how do we get this right? So I would just ask, implore, is grace and patience, grace and patience as we work through this. I'll make myself available. If you have questions, you want to talk about anything, reach out. But I would tell you that this whole book thing is not unique to Central York. You know this, this has happened across the country. So how can we be that beacon? How can we be that city in a light to say, now, we're going to get through this, we're going to lock arms, and we're going to get through it together? So with that said, Mr. King, I'll go back to you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Uchev.
Thank you, Mr. King. So I would ask Ms. Martin if she would be able to put up an update on the 2225 Central York School District Comprehensive and Strategic Plan. So as the board is aware and as the community is aware, we engaged in a new comprehensive strategic plan throughout the fall of this year, which was board approved in December. Part of that plan is a four-time-a-year communication to the board regarding updates, work that's been done on each of the goals. We shared this, we shared this with you tonight, and this will be loaded in board docs at the close of the meeting tonight. And moving forward, you will see this publicly prior to our presentation, but we wanted to just provide some context around the document tonight before we begin releasing it. So this is the first of our quarterly reports here under the new plan. And what you see at the top, if you recall from the plan itself, we divided our plan into three focal areas, teaching and learning, student progress and engagement, and finance and operations. The color coding that you see to the right indicates green is on time, we're on pace. Yellows, we're marginally off pace. And red means that we are significantly behind where we would like to be at this time. So it's a quick gauge, a quick snapshot at the top to see where we're at on each of the goals in each of the focal areas. As you scroll down through, and I won't read all of the updates for you, I'll certainly allow you to do that on your own. But as you look, each of the goals are listed on this document. And underneath each of those goals, we will provide quarterly updates as to the specific work that has been done around each of the goal areas. To the right, you'll see a percentage. That percentage is, honestly, it's a best guesstimate in terms of our completion rate or work toward those goals. And as you see next to that, the color coding that lets you know and lets our community know whether we're on pace to work towards achieving those goals within our desired timeline, which you see in the last column here of this document. So as you see, as we go down through, and again, you'll see an outline, you'll see a description of each of the goal areas, and you'll see a highlight of what we've done in each of those areas in working towards the achievement. As we go down through, you'll notice again that all goal areas are green, some are higher achieving than others. Some of that has to do with the work that we were already engaged in prior to the adoption of the plan, that we built into the plan, and some is brand-new work that we're working on. So as you go through, you're seeing anywhere from 10% up to 100% in one of the areas of some work that we've done here at this point and worked towards that. So with that said, I share that template with you. I allow you some time for reflection on that. Again, tonight, you haven't had a chance to preview all of those specific updates, and I would want you to be able to digest that, and I certainly could take any questions tonight, or certainly moving forward in a future meeting, but we wanted to get the template in front of you this evening. Ms. Montgomery will be also making this available via the website because the plan is posted on there for our community to track and follow. But we're excited about this work. We shared that with the adoption of the plan, and we're excited about the work that's already being done in working towards the achievement of each of these goals. So I'll certainly take any questions at this time.
Ms. Ma'am.
I know that the last time we talked about the comprehensive plan, it hadn't been fully approved by the state. Has it been now?
Yes, all components of the comprehensive plan are fully adopted by the state at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Uchev.
Thank you.
Next up, 9.01, our first of two periods of citizen comment. The Board of School Directors encourages comments from community members during the citizen comment section of the agenda. Upon being recognized by the board president, an individual should state his/her name, confirm that they are either a parent, guardian, resident, taxpayer, district employee, district student, or anyone representing a group or firm in the community or school district, and may not speak to the board for a period no longer, for a period no longer than five minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. The board requests that neither complaints concerning job performance nor allegations of misconduct relating to specific employees or students be raised at a public meeting. To the extent citizens have concerns about such matters, they should be referred to the superintendent. And with that, the floor is yours. Ms. Grothie, if you'd keep clock, I'll keep the running clock. Good evening.
I'd first like to highlight that our educators are held to a code of professional practice, and I will share some of what it states. It states that educators should have universal respect, have the best interest of students in mind, do no harm by way of not causing sexual, physical, emotional, or psychological damage, maintain appropriate professional relationships and boundaries, protect students from harm, and that educators are held to a higher moral standard. But I question if this is being considered within our district. It seems these standards are being treated as suggestions, not commitments. By my standards and the standards for educators set forth by PA, these commitments would indicate that books being used in our classrooms should not include detailed sexual scenes, glorification of alcohol and drugs, or glamorized criminal behavior. They should include relatable, age-appropriate, and educational material. If any book in question possesses any of the above, then you as an educator are failing to adhere to the PA Standards of Practice and Code of Ethics. This is not in the best interest of students, can be causing harm, and is also concerning because our mental health industry is already overwhelmed. Do we want to add to this? And our educators are not trained as psychologists. They are not educated to handle the psychological repercussions as a result of reading books of these traits. This, again, is causing harm. This is not to debate or disregard that students can benefit from reading and discussing sensitive topics, but the context of the book certainly doesn't have to be overly explicit. It's concerning that our own educators, who are familiar with the materials they are teaching, are choosing materials such as these. Next, I'd like to share a personal experience from here in our high school. My child came home, began sharing excerpts of a book that they were using in school. It contained detailed description of molestation, violence, death, and rape. This was addressed to the teacher and an administrator. Much to my disgust, I was told it was unfair of me to ask the teacher to consider that there could be students that have suffered from abuse and how this may affect them, let alone any other students in the class and how this makes them feel. My child has no abuse history, is not sheltered, and has the ability to ask any question as it is answered factually, but despite this, my child was still uncomfortable. I've yet to find a colleague, family member, or a friend who agrees this book is suitable for a high school student. And in our district, specifically in our high school, this could be a spread in ages, all of which are not on the same psychological level. Out of all the books to choose from, why are our educators selecting books containing highly sensitive content? The bottom line is, this book and many others are pushing, or should I say, completely devoid of moral boundaries. Often, they are not factual, nor are they a real-life story. They are not age-appropriate, are bordering on being pornographic, and at times lacking any educational value. With that being said, I agree with the challenge of the book Push. We as a community to support the committee and policies that are in place to ensure that all books are appropriate for our students. At a quick glance or a quick search, the book Push is described as obscene and violent, containing child abuse of all forms, illiteracy, incest, prostitution, and rape, a very hard book to read. Another quote was, and after you read this book, you'll need therapy. Someone mentions that this author is telling her very disturbing story in the most graphic way so that we can feel her pain. Again, someone else explained it as being most graphic, disturbing, and sickening. And finally, another one was that it is very sexually explicit descriptions of both rape and molestation. If our district makes the immoral decision to keep these books available, they are choosing to ignore to be held to a higher moral standard. Since this seems to be the trajectory here, then transparency needs to be a part of every classroom. No ifs, ands, or buts. We as a community need to rise to the challenge of educating our students effectively without all of these continual distractions, and do so while modeling the standards of education. Thank you. And actually, another question, does anyone here know how many neighboring districts or anyone in our general area that is actively using this book in their classrooms? Anyone?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marga Peace. Before I start with the monologue that I've prepared, I just wanted to address what the first lady said. I was sexually assaulted when I was 10 years old, and you made me, what you just said made me feel disgusted by myself that I was sexually assaulted and that I just did not like, maybe you were trying to word it differently, but that just made me feel disgusted at myself. But hello, everyone. My name is Marga Peace, and I'm a concerned student of Central York High School. I mean, have we learned nothing? I thought we left this in the past. I'm here to tell you how book banning impacts students, since as a student, I, not you, have experienced it firsthand. When books are banned or challenged, the footing of the curriculum becomes unstable. Banning books limits access to lived experiences and erases much-needed voices. Instead of challenging books, maybe readers should challenge how they think about stories that are different from their own. For students, book banning means a denial of First Amendment rights, a narrow worldview, and does not allow students to think for themselves. Censorship deprives students and teachers of the skills, the knowledge, and confidence to have critical conversations in the classroom. Many of you up there have roots that are rooted in hate and discrimination. I won't name names, you know who you are. Many may say that our past doesn't matter because we live in the present, but what we forget is if history isn't talked about or explored, the result is a lack of understanding of the present. If the past is explored, the present can be understood. A better future can be made by refusing to make the same mistake or take the same actions you or your ancestors have in the past. I would also like to share that in my past history classes, I have had people make comments, well, one individual made comments about how racism and slavery is related to cookies. I don't know what that means, but it was stupid. I've also heard this individual say that black people have created slavery. That is wrong, and that shows that this education system has failed some. And if we continue to keep banning these educational books, that is what we're going to get more of. Also, in my English class, there was rumors and comments I did not hear, but that it was made by my English teacher. And instead of following the chain of command and going to the teacher, she then, the individual brought it up to the, straight to the administration, and was calling students down. And I think that if you really want to care about your education, you need to follow the chain of command. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, hello. My name is Christopher Snell. I'm a parent of a student in the district. I would like to express my support for the updates to the policy 105.1, which allows for parent review of instructional materials in the schools, and for Dr. Aiken's proposal to create a rating system, which will identify that media which may contain materials that do not align with the values of specific families or identify material that may be deemed appropriate for certain age children. Parents and guardians would then have the capability to monitor, approve, or disapprove the independent reading material for their children. The question of what kinds of media to include and what to exclude from the school library can at times be a controversial and emotionally charged topic. And it is to be expected that community members and parents will sometimes differ in their opinions on what should be included and what should be left out. Therefore, it is important to have a mechanism in place by which parents, teachers, and community members can review materials and express any concerns. It is also wise to have a rating system that can be applied to those works of literary merit that are included in the school collection but which still contain adult themes or sensitive material, just as there is a rating system for movies or television. Rating systems are valuable tools to aid parents in their decision-making concerning the media content their children are exposed to. I think we can all agree that some books would not be appropriate for a school library, whether due to explicit nature of their content, their lack of literary merit, or both. The debate often comes to where should the line be drawn? Many classic and contemporary literary works have adult themes and are taught in most every high school in America. For instance, among the many themes of Shakespeare include romance, violence, war, crime, deceit, hatred, dishonesty, and envy. And Shakespeare is a staple of high school literature. So who are we to judge? But as adults in the charge of education, educating young people in safe and responsible manner, we must judge, because we as a school community are responsible for providing access to excellent literature for our students, because some books or media do not meet the dual criteria of both literary merit and appropriateness of themes and language for a minor audience. So it is necessary and right that a district have a process in place for evaluating books and other forms of media, particularly those which focus on mature themes, and include graphic, sexual content, violence, or language. Our district does have a policy, and the proposed updates to policy 105.1 seem reasonable and appropriate. I believe that the review policy was reasonably applied to the particular book most recently in question. To ask the committee to reconsider this specific book is certainly an option for those who believe it has literary merit and that the explicit language it contains is appropriate for teenagers to read, but let us not lose sight of the fact that our district must have a procedure for analyzing and deciding on controversial content. To have no such policy would be an abdication of our duty to wisely steward the resources we place before young minds. While personally, I agree with the decision to remove the specific book, in the future, I may well disagree with the decision made about other works. And if I felt strongly, I would also appeal that, just as some community members are doing with these most recent decisions. But fundamentally, I hope that we can all come together and agree that we should support our district in the difficult, but important work of curating resources for our schools. And we should remember that explicit language and mature themes must be considered with great care. In conclusion, I believe that Dr. Aiken's proposal to establish a rating system for those materials which do meet the requirement of implementing, supporting, and enriching the educational program, but which contain themes and language which some families may not be comfortable with, is a wise and reasonable way to provide transparency, maximize the number of worthwhile materials which are available in the schools, and also give parents the necessary tools to make the decisions. the necessary tools to make the decisions they believe are best for their own children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Jackson.
Hello, my name is Patty Jackson, and I'm an English teacher at the high school. I'm also a published author represented by a literary agent. My first novel, Forging a Nightmare, is an urban fantasy that debuted in 2021. Professionally, I have published several Star Wars stories, including the source book, Black Sands of Sakuro. My work has appeared with bestselling authors Timothy Zahn and the legendary Michael A. Stackpole. My latest story about a black stormtrooper will appear in an anthology to commemorate the fourth anniversary of Return of the Jedi. I would stake my publishing pedigree against anyone and everyone who served on the expert committee that judged the novel pushed to be unworthy of literary merit. To qualify one's literary experience with "I taught in a black school" or "a school that had gangs" is akin to saying, "Oh, but I have black friends," and it's equally offensive. When will the practice of fetishizing, sexualizing, and demonizing the black experience cease? I was asked by a community member to read some excerpts from Push, from chapter one, "When Precious Was a Little Rough." "I big, I talk, I eat, I cook, I laugh, watch TV, do what my mother say, but I can see when the picture come back, I don't exist. Don't nobody want me, don't nobody need me. I know who I am, I know who they say I am, vampire sucking the system's blood, ugly black grease to be wiped away, punished, kilt, changed, find it a job for. I want to say I am somebody, I want to say it on subway, TV, movie, loud. I see the pink faces in suits looking over top of my head. I watch myself disappear in their eyes, their tesses. I talk loud, but still I don't exist." Then from chapter four, "When the Character is Transformed." "The meeting is good, it's for HIV-positive girls, 16 to 21. Miss Rain say people who help you most, sometimes, is ones in the same boat. I started putting my story in the big book at school. I want to get it done before I graduate out to GED. Last week, we went to the museum, a whole whale hanging from the ceiling, bigger than big, okay? Have you ever seen a Volkswagen car that's like a bug? Uh-huh, you know what I'm talking about. That's how big the heart of a blue whale is. I know it's impossible, but if that heart was in me, could I love more? Miss Rain, Rita, Abdul, I would like to. Abdul get tested, he is not HIV-positive. Something like that make me feel what Rhonda, what Farrakhan say, there is a God. But me, when I think of it, I'm more inclined to go as Shug in The Color Purple. God ain't white, he ain't Jew, he ain't Muslim, maybe he ain't even black, maybe he ain't even a he." I would like to close tonight with the message from Sapphire, the author of Push. Dear fellow citizen readers and writers, we enter hollow ground covering unseen sinkholes when we ban works of art. Decades ago, academics moaned over the closing of the American mind. When we ban books like Push, The Color Purple, Beloved, and the autobiography of Malcolm X, we stand not just to close our collective minds, but to lose them. We've entered into an age where the inability to feel and empathize has led to a collective psychosis characterized by mass murders in the classroom and in our places of worship. Push is a book about the awakening and healing of a violent and violated child. Through acts of love demonstrated by her teacher and classmates, she becomes an academic success story and a proud, loving mother. Push is a story about the power of language, the letters of the alphabet, that many of our children leave school never having learned. Push is about the power of language to transform and open the mind and the heart. Push heals, Push teaches, but most of all, Push loves. When we ban books like Push, we are in danger of falling into the sinkholes of hate and prejudice and ignorance and of losing what little love we have left for each other. Yours in healing, hope, and love, Sapphire." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm a resident of the Central York School District with two high school-aged children since you graduated. I'm a doctor in audiology. I've taught kids in homeschool and public school settings and am a children's book author. I saw respected friends post on Facebook last night that my husband and I both read regarding banning books. We were both in agreement that we don't agree with banning books. Then this morning, another respected friend asked me to speak regarding this issue at the school board meeting. Initial thoughts regarding removing this book from the library were, number one, why are there no better steps to prevent inappropriate books from getting into the school library to begin with, which you've answered, so that we are not here allowing further division to be created? Number two, if we start removing books, what will keep people from removing other books in the future, like our history that is disappearing before our eyes? Number three, this book, like the movie, is about surviving a horrendous life of abuse, a strong woman character who doesn't give up. I would love my child to be made aware of the reality of children who suffer abuse as I did as a child, and then to desire to come alongside and fight abuse. Upon further reflection and research, my thoughts have changed and I now side with removing this book. I still feel that there needs to be a new standard set that determines if a book should or should not be allowed in the school libraries that we don't get to this point. However, I believe that the steps and the forms that were filled out to bring this book into question, the reasons why were appropriate. This book contains entirely too much concerning information regarding rape abuse that a child under 18 should not read without close adult supervision. We probably all agree that books are not as detailed as, I'm sorry, that the movies are not as detailed as the original book. The movie was rated R, and that, too, would not be appropriate for a high school viewing or viewing of anyone under 18 without adult supervision. It is not a call-to-action book, but a fictional book that, although it could be true, puts too much attention on very concerning behaviors, again, rape, abuse, bullying, that should only be read with adult supervision and is absolutely not appropriate for children or pre-adults to be reading independently. This book has no educational relevance for children under 18. There is a vivid description of a sex act with her father that no one can justify is in any way appropriate for anyone under 18 to read, let alone disturbing for adults to read. There's so much out there on social media and entertainment, and we cannot protect our kids from everything, even if we are diligent parents that are making an honest attempt to do so. We truly need a tribe to all work together to protect our kids from being exposed to things they shouldn't, and I applaud the school committee for fighting this battle to keep our kids protected while they are under their care. If anyone feels that this book should be read by their child, it is not banned, but available at Amazon or a public library. Hopefully, it will not be easily accessible by a child looking for independent reading that is not mature enough to handle the rated R adult content presented in this book. To allow this book to be available for children in our schools would be absolutely irresponsible. Is there any way to bring a page up on the screen of the book, or no? From my phone, like put a picture up or anything? No. I absolutely cannot read it. But if there is someone here that very strongly believes that this book should be in the school and allowed for, I'm sorry? Okay, sorry.
You need to address.
So I have a page here from the book that I would not feel comfortable with my ninth grader or senior reading. I actually think it's even too vulgar to have in a pornographic magazine. And I just, you know, I love what she wrote, and I think it is a powerful book in general. But this one page, I think, would have everyone very alarmed, and I would like to call attention to it. Is there a way to do it?
If it starts to go into vulgar language due to policy 903, we will actually have to stop comment.
Okay, so, that being said, it is pretty intense, and the fact that it would be too vulgar to even read, does that not tell you that it's probably too vulgar to have a ninth grader, even anyone under the age of 18 to read this? So is there, can I have one of you, I don't know, what can I do here? Okay, so how about I read, and if you feel it's inappropriate, you just tell me to stop at any point? But if there is anyone under 18, I probably would recommend them not be here, but is it okay if I start reading?
You can start, but again, if I'm told by my solicitor here that it's crossing that line, then we will stop it.
Yeah, I'm not even comfortable reading it, but my point is that if I can't read this and it's too inappropriate to be read at a meeting, then it's probably too inappropriate for children to read. So this time, I know Mama, no. She know, she bring him to me. I ain't crazy, that stinking hoe give him to me. Probably that's what he required to F her, some of me. Got to where he'd just come in my room, any old time, not just night.
Time. Thank you, ma'am. And if you could, I'm gonna pause while I ask this question. Could you please state your name for the record?
Carrie Durand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, hello, how's everyone today? Doing well. My name is Jamie Hill. I am a father of a fourth grader at St. East Springs Elementary. I also have concerns about this proposed rating system or updating of book, you know, books that are not going to be deemed, that are going to be deemed inappropriate. Rating systems for books are not a compromise. Pulling books from shelves based on challenges are not a compromise. In fact, the only and simplest compromise is to say no to not banning books. I'm gonna tell you why. So on one hand, you have a group of people who will eagerly challenge books because they want to control what all kids have access to based on their personal beliefs. Their goal, to restrict education they don't personally deem acceptable. On the other hand, you have parents like me who won't because they see the importance of an educational system that values a myriad of experiences and beliefs, whether or not they align with mine or not. But see, but that's the problem, right? When you pull books from shelves, you, as a board and as a school district, signal tacit support for folks who speak out against diversity, inclusion, and desire to erase education of marginalized experiences. This isn't a compromise. The result will be a disproportionate amount of books that will be challenged and therefore pulled because of the challenger's beliefs. And this will affect marginalized communities the most. The system you are proposing is the quintessential definition of systematic racism, systematic homophobia, and systematic transphobia. And I know that this is not your initial intent, but this will be the eventual and dire consequence. You are creating a mechanism for racism and homophobia to be injected into our schools by bad faith actors. And this is a slippery slope, and we cannot go down this. Instead of building this mechanism to codify others' disdain for diversity in our schools, I would like to propose creating a mechanism to ensure a safe educational environment for all of our students. And not just all of our students, but students in particular, like the student that we heard from in our last meeting, who endured bullying from the same extreme discriminatory mindset that encourages book banning in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With our time left, this will be our last comment for this period, and then again, we will have 45 minutes at the end. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Walker. I'm a parent. Providing context for a brilliant, unforgettable, but heavy book like Push is important. Content warnings, supportive resources like study guides or reading groups, the district can provide and facilitate these. It has no legitimate interest, however, in building a new regime of classification and control for books that might be challenged by the most closed-minded among us. This is something that has been proposed in conversations among stakeholders, and it is something we must reject. Don't segregate our libraries. We do not need a caste system that grants access to some and denies it for others. Those proposing it are really promoting CRT in our schools. And by CRT, I, of course, mean censorship and restriction tactics. We need a system that embraces diverse perspectives and ideas, that encourages exploration and connection, and mirrors a free society, which is where we are supposed to be training our students to live. Let's have libraries, not a caste system of books, with checkpoints and opt-in permission slips. Administrators lack the training, objectivity, and credibility to craft a workable rating system. For many teachers who would likely be assigned the unpaid work of classifying books under such a system, creating that system is self-obscene. It is impossible to do it objectively without passing on the biases and values of those doing the ratings. That makes it a foolish enterprise. Once it begins, the debates will never, ever end about which book ends up where. It will be politicized from day one, sucking up all the oxygen in the room forever. It will be this forever. The board will be stuck defending it or amending it as long as it exists. So resist the urge to classify and rate everything that is a prelude to restriction and control, to more book banning. Book banning is never an objective, politically-neutral exercise. Too many people on the political far right are eager to challenge texts. Hardly anyone on the center or left is interested. The very act of challenging books is a biased one. You will never, ever be able to do it honestly except for material which is wholly obscene. If you want to ban obscene books, use the three-pronged Miller test of obscenity that the United States Supreme Court uses. For everything else, go with ad hoc content warnings and supplemental resources if you wish. Most importantly, let the existing challenge system, which allows parents and guardians to restrict borrowing privileges on the accounts of their own children alone, to do its work. This technology exists to solve this problem. The apparatus is already in place. This opt-out solution is workable. Don't let anyone sell you on some opt-in regime for a supposedly controversial cast of books. By the way, it's not that I have anything else, anything against those who follow the ideology of CRT, which, of course, I mean cowardly removal tantrums. I want to reassure people affiliated with the Moms for Liberty, if being scared of books and ideas is your preferred lifestyle choice, I can respect that. Consentant, book-fearing adults can do that together in their own homes. It's when you act in this way in our libraries and public meetings that I find it distasteful. The rest of us are trying to raise brave children who can tolerate exposure to new ideas. Our children can even reject an idea after having encountered them while still retaining an understanding and empathy for those who believe and act differently for themselves. Meanwhile, you can exercise your rights to tell scary stories about monstrous books hiding under the bed or whatever it is you do, but you have no right to impose your extremist book-hitting lifestyle on our libraries. This book banning agenda stems from fear, fear of what we refuse to understand, fear that we will lose what positions of power we have. In other words, it's cowardice. A restrictive book rating system is an act of cowardice. It should not be your next move. And clearly, many of your students already know this, for instance, people in the Panther Anti-Racist Union, but I'll remind the rest of you. Aware of anyone who would deny you access to information and perspectives you have a right to hear, because in your hearts, those people dream themselves your masters. I urge the board to vote no on adopting revisions to policy 105.1 and 105.4 as currently written. They will do nothing to stop restrictive resource bans that only limit our students' understanding of the world instead of enhancing them. Please take them back to the drawing board and start over. Thank you.
Next up, 10.01, adoption of policies. These will be the second reading of policy 105.1 and 109. These would be up for final adoption on April 17th. Yes, ma'am.
May I just make a comment about these? One of the things that anyone who was not at the policy committee meeting that just, or the joint policy curriculum committee meeting that came before this one, we made it very clear that these two policies are designed to cover only materials that are used in the classroom for instructional purposes. So we've taken the position that all various types of materials that are being used in instruction are tied to the curriculum and need to follow the curriculum that has been presented, written by the administration, presented and approved by the board. And so these two policies have absolutely nothing to do with the library and how those books that are there for independent reading. We are talking, as Dr. Aiken said, about looking at library itself as a separate entity because the materials are different. So the purpose of these policies is to flesh out all the various types of resources that are appropriately used in instruction, which include textbooks, which is policy 108, and policy 109. and policy 109 refers to several types of other instructional materials, some that are approved and show up in the unit maps that are part of the curriculum. And then there are ad hoc materials that teachers can bring into their classroom to enhance the classroom instruction. And what the policy says about those is the teacher can bring them in to use them for her, her or his instruction, but they have to, when they do that, follow the curriculum requirements for materials. But they don't have any restrictions on them other than that they keep in mind what the curriculum requires. And so these policies have no actual application to the library issue that everyone's talking about. One thing I want to mention is there was a very minor change made to 109 at the meeting before this, and all it did was take, there was a phrase that said, the superintendent, he or his, and we added his or her so that it applied in future to whatever superintendent might be in the, in the district. So I just wanted to clarify what these two policies are related to.
Thank you. Um, so Ms. Guth explained, explained that well. I just wanted to just add another layer of clarification, um, just to make it clear to everybody that's here tonight and everybody that's listening. What Ms. Guth said is right, that we have, in our meeting at five o'clock this evening, we really talked about how these two policies are only dealing with books and resources and materials that are used in the classroom. We recognized as a whole board that, um, that the way these policies had been written in the past, although we were thinking that they applied to library books, they did not indeed apply to library books that are not used in curriculum, books that are just in the library that can be checked out but are not used in educational, for educational purposes. And because of that, we have decided as a board, as a committee, that we are going to draft a new policy that addresses library books. So I just wanted to make that clear, that when we vote to vote on these two policies tonight, we are voting on the language that we decided as a committee to approve for curriculum-based materials, not library-based materials. That will come later. It's going to take a while because there are going to be new policies, associated administrative regulations, which when we say ARs, that's what we're referring to. And so those are going to come, and that process for how we will challenge library books is going to come at a later date. So when we vote on that tonight, I want that to be understood by the public that we are not voting about library, library book policies for those books that are not used in curriculum. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And just for clarification, there is no vote tonight.
Oh, sorry.
On, no, that's, so.
Next time.
Next meeting on April 17th, so.
I, I'd just like to add that the first read was the last meeting, and so far, I don't think the administration, and I know I as the policy committee chairperson, has not received any input from any of the board members, so I encourage you that if you have questions or concerns to reach out so that before we take the vote, we'll have your input. Thank you.
To my knowledge, that is correct on the board. I know we've received a couple of comments from citizens, one that came in today. Yeah, so I just wanted to let the, and that one has not, so, again, so, but you are correct. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments at this time? Again, this is our second read. This will be up for, yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Um, we had a long discussion at five o'clock regarding the library, library resources. We've had a very good discussion, I think, all around with different people. But also, one thing in the 105.1, it does, there is a mention of library books, but just to clarify that a little bit more, it is talking about the library books as resources in the classroom. So this 105.1 will not be dealing with library books as in the library for independent reading. It does mention library books. It talks about what they are, but it is solely going to be focused on them as part of the resources in our curriculum. And we are, I'm on the curriculum committee, so I won't be part of that policy, but for policy 109, hopefully we will come up with something that is better for library books at large.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Anyone else? Okay. Number 11, we will take both action items under education together. 11.01, it is recommended that the board approve the dual enrollment agreements as presented. And 11.02, it is recommended that the board approve the Central York Field Trip Request List as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Any votes in opposition? Seeing our hearing none, 11.01 and 11.02 pass, we'll now take our one action item under co-curricular. 12.01, it is recommended that the board approve the following individuals for aquatics, athletic, co-curricular appointments as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Again, any votes in opposition? Seeing our hearing none, 12.01 passes, we will take all five action items under personnel together. 13.01, it is recommended that the board approve the conferences and workshops for March 2023 as presented. 13.02, it is recommended that the board approve the following professional substitutes as presented. 13.03, it is recommended that the board approve the following support staff substitutes as presented. 13.04, it is recommended that the board approve the following bus drivers for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented. And 13.05, it is recommended that the board approve the following individuals for employment as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on these five items? Any votes in opposition? Seeing our hearing none, 13.01 through 13.05 all pass. We will now move on to our action items under executive and finance. We will take 14.01 through 14.03 together. 14.01, it is recommended that the board approve the financial reports as presented. 14.02, it is recommended that the board deny the step three CYE-SPA grievance and authorize the board president to issue a written response as discussed. And finally, 14.03, it is recommended that the board approve the agreement with Market Street Sports Group as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any votes in opposition? Seeing none, 14.01 through 14.03 all pass. We will now move on to our action items under community. We will take 15.01 and 15.02 together. 15.01, it is recommended that the board approve the following facility rentals as presented. And 15.02, it is recommended that the board approve the following fundraisers as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Any votes in opposition? Okay, seeing our hearing none, 15.01 and 15.02 both pass. That moves us on to board reports. York County School of Technology, Ms. Guth.
Sorry. Um, as I've mentioned before, every month, there are students of the month that are nominated by teachers and staff members, and it's quite a honor to the students there because their peers and their teachers are the ones who put them up for this honor. And there are 25 different trades, so there are usually five or so each month because they come from all kinds of different programs. This month, we have a central student who is a senior at York Tech, Jordan Hooper. She is studying sports technology and exercise science. And, um, one of the things I've mentioned, and I'm going to send something to Ms. Martin, they have a video where they go out and they interview the student, and they interview some of the peers, and they show them in their trade. And it gives, they each answer a few quick questions about what they're doing and where they're headed. And then they show up at the meeting and their parents come and we honor them in person. But these videos are very, um, very well done and, and I think go a long way to showcase these students. And so I'll provide that because we're talking about doing some students of the month, and it may be helpful. Everything else that was at the meeting last Thursday, the 23rd, was that the 23rd, 24th, 23rd? Yes, it was the 23rd. Was normal personnel items and the kinds of things that we talked about tonight. The only other thing I'd say, as I mentioned last month, that they are looking to expand the adult education program there, which is totally self-sufficient. They don't take any monies from tuition, and they don't take any monies from the government. They do offer grant money to their students for scholarships. But that is also expanding quite a lot. And so the, the desire for trade training is really growing in this area. And it will have ramifications because obviously if they have to float a bond or something for an facility expansion, that will affect us as well. And I do believe, I don't know that all of the results are in, but I do believe that we increased our number of students who are going to be attending next fall. So it's a great organization.
Thank you, Ms. Guth. Any questions? Okay, thank you for that report. Ms. Martin, do we have anything for Mr. Bieber?
No, we haven't. There was no meeting the last month.
All right, thank you. So that moves us on to legislative committee. Due to the amount of proposed legislation or legislative memorandums, which are circulating right now, I'm not going to go into great depth, but I will, I'm just going to run down a list of about 30 pieces of legislation that have popped up in the education arena. Again, if anyone, I've got a folder full of it. So if anyone wants to come up and ask about them, uh, we can certainly get you that information. Before I read down this list real quick, um, I did want to make note of last I have, last I saw that their Governor Shapiro had stated that he did not believe that the, uh, Republicans in the House were going to, um, appeal the court's decision on the funding. And so at this point in time, uh, because again, that almost 800, uh, page piece of, uh, court order didn't really specify as to how anyone was to move forward, um, on that funding. So, uh, I believe that if there is no appeal at this point in time, what the administration plans to do is meet with members of the legislature and start to determine, um, how a funding change would, what that would look like. And so again, we're still a long ways out from, I think, having any kind of answers on that. But at least at this point in time, there did not appear if there's, there's going to be any kind of appellate action taken. With that, again, just running down this list real quick, um, there was, uh, again, this either legislation that's floating around or sponsorship memorandums, but, um, one was on Keystone exams and a feasibility study there. A piece of legislation regarding residency disputes and what to do with, uh, children who, who are in the middle of a dispute. Classifying dyslexia as a disability under school code. There is one regarding school counselors. Parental notification of students involved in school incidents. One regarding Safe Schools Partnership Act. Again, this one I know has been touched on before, but requiring AEDs in schools. School board, um, solicitor legislation, and, and really at the heart of that one was that, solicitors act in the best interest of the school board. There were some incidences specifically cited to out in the Western District of the state. And again, this all goes back to that COVID time period. One, uh, as far as what to do with, uh, teacher retention. One, uh, for protecting older children in schools. And again, I believe this went back to, because that age limit was raised because of COVID, you're seeing, um, some students who may be in school who a little older than had previously been. And so providing some, uh, protections there. Read to succeed pre-K to three, to third grade, uh, literacy support, teacher loan forgiveness, Property Tax Protection Act, Educating PA Students on Civil Rights Era, Media Literacy, Career Bound Workforce Development Program, School-Linked Mental Health Grants, Student Religious Liberties Act, Changing the date that school districts must adopt their budget, Parental Rights in Education, Increasing Access to School Counselors, Psychologists, Social Workers and Nurses, School Armed Guard Protection Act, Removing Barriers to High School Graduation, Removing Derogatory Terms from the School Code of 1949, Education Money to Follow the Child, School Transportation Consolidation Study. Again, I know these two were touched on, um, last month, I just bring them up because again, they are being, um, floated around. That's, uh, compensation for school board members and school board member-related training. Temporarily relating, raising the maximum school age due to COVID-19. That was done once before, and there's legislation floating around again to increase that. Again, survey on school infrastructure capital costs. We know as this is something we're going through here, Mr. Strickler and Mr. Bill and his team do a great job with this. I think the state is trying to get an overall handle on, on what that looks like. So that's what that is. Civic education graduation requirement. Requiring schools to report attempted and committed suicide incidents. And last but not least, tutoring program. So again, I have a folder full here. If anyone actually cares to learn more about any of these, I'm happy to pass that information along. If there are no other questions from anyone up here, I will turn it over to Ms. Martin for the Lincoln Benefit Trust.
We did not have a meeting in the past month, so I have nothing to report.
All right, back to me. 16.05, York Adams Academy, Mr. Thurman.
Yes, sir. Um, our last meeting was February 28th, and we approved the agenda from the previous meeting on January 31st, and coming up tomorrow with our meeting, we're going to have something on the agenda for moving the December graduation from December to January, which makes sense, and it made sense when we were talking about it. And the proposed calendar for their YA year this year, and it's pretty much going to be the same as this past year. So not too much. Hopefully it'll be a quick meeting tomorrow and, you know, I can get home and watch some sports on TV. So anyway, thank you. That's my report.
Very positive outlook.
Right?
16.06, York LIU Joint Authority, Ms. Crane.
Right, we actually did meet last Wednesday. Uh, we approved the agenda, excuse me, the minutes from December. There was a proposed budget was approved. Uh, there is no increase in cost per school district for the third consecutive year. So that was a good thing to hear. They did a building and facilities update. Again, a lot of the things are very similar to what you see in a board meeting here. They have outsourced mowing and grounds, uh, to apparently Engine Company, who is also in charge of doing the sports complex that is right near York Learning Center. They are using grant money to update exterior lighting and install additional cameras. They talked about some of the programs that are happening at the York Learning Center, and the meeting was adjourned, and our next meeting is May 17th.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Crane? Okay, thank you very much. 16.07, Policy Committee, Ms. Guth. I know you've already touched on that. I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, I just have one extra comment in addition to the comments I made earlier. We have been meeting as a joint curriculum and policy committee since, what, September? And so there were a number of policies that, um, affected and are affected by, uh, curriculum. So we've been doing it together so that both of those issues can be addressed at the same time. There are two remaining policies that we will consider jointly. One is assessments, and it's on the agenda, but with all the discussion about the, um, the policies we're considering now, we didn't get to it. And then the final one is, uh, current events, how that should be handled in the classrooms. We want our children to be exposed to current events, but we need to put some guardrails on how that, how it's presented so that it's, it's fair and balanced approach. So we'll continue to have joint meetings next month, and then we'll see how far we get. But when those four are done, or those two, then, uh, we'll go back to independent meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Guth. Any questions? Okay, next up, 16.08, curriculum.
Okay, the curriculum committee met on March 13th. Dr. Ucheff reported, um, this, how many students were enrolled in our dual enrollment? Currently, we are partnering with eight colleges. Currently, we are partnering with eight colleges. In fall, we had 111 students participate, spring 98. And this summer, we will have 42 students. We also have college in the classroom. I had asked him how many students are enrolled with our teachers teaching college in the classroom. And currently there are 73 students enrolled for this semester. So we have a great turnout of students sampling to see if colleges rate for them and taking advantage of the cost of college. He also reported the ELA vetting update, which March 16th was when the two last companies were to give their last presentation. Next steps would be to deliberate as a committee. And they, the curriculum, the search committee, the ELA committee, will go to visit schools that have that curriculum and visit them in person. And then also we will be reviewing the prices of that curriculum. April 6th, I'm sorry, library unit maps, K-3 were shared and reviewed by the Curriculum Committee. We reviewed them and had a few questions. Our recommendation was to move that to the full board on April 17th. And April 17th is our next Curriculum Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guth. Any questions? Okay, last up, 16.09 Finance, Mr. Strickler.
All right, I'm going to apologize in advance here. I have a little bit more substance on the topic of the Finance Committee. We had our most recent meeting on Wednesday of last week, on the 22nd of March. We discussed a number of topics, but the centerpiece that we discussed is the latest projections, fiscal projections for the current school year, as well as the draft. It's shaping up of a proposed budget that the full board will soon see for the next school year. And because of its importance and as a context here for further entire board dialogues, I'd like to recap, if you can just indulge me for a moment here, to kind of set the stage. And all of us are concerned about having a sustainable school system to take care of our teachers, take care of our support staff, our facilities to maintain those and continue to be able to deliver and serve our students. So we're dealing with some fairly heavy topics with regard to where we are fiscally. So this is mostly a briefing for the board as a precursor for the next couple of months. We're going to talk more in April and May, but also a good reminder for the public who might not have picked up the Finance Committee meeting. So with respect to where the current numbers are, and they're based upon Ms. Martin's projections on the proposed budget at this stage, as well as five years out from that in what's called the rolling eight. What we're seeing is an operating fund balance that goes upside down. It goes negative by the end of that rolling eight period and specifically to $6.7 million negative. The capital fund is nearly zero almost the whole way through at the end of any school year. And it would take $19.7 million to achieve minimum targets of $8 million for our operating fund balance and $5 million for our capital fund. And those are fairly conservative numbers of where we should be with fund balances. And that's consistent with what we've talked about last year as we approve the budget for this year. So that breaks down to a gap of about $3.3 million for each, for every year of the six years from '23, '24 and through '28, '29. There's a reason I'm emphasizing that gap, $3.3 million, and it'll become clear in a moment. And even with that, I will tell you, the capital spending that's assumed in this modeling that Ms. Martin put together is bare bones. It's based upon Mr. Bill and Mr. Rhodes. Their extensive work in selecting projects, but even the numbers we have in are $450,000 short for that period of time. It assumes inflation is not further protracted and as we all know as consumers and we know what the Fed is doing with the interest rate, that's an ongoing concern about how long inflation is going to last. It leaves no allowance for an ELA support program if indeed that's a determination that one is needed. And with the tax increases already assumed, we'll have a little wiggle room to address unforeseen challenges. If we look backwards and we think about unforeseen challenges, it's pretty clear that it certainly have occurred and we're not entirely sure what the future will hold. So the reason I'm giving you this context is it is crucial that we brainstorm efficiencies where we can. And the administration has done a lot of work in that regard and we're going to have more discussion on that coming up. But I just want to set the stage as to why that is so important. And as Mr. King alluded to, we're optimistic that the Pennsylvania funding could change based upon the Commonwealth Court decision. But, and we had some thought that maybe would be appealed to the state Supreme Court. That appears maybe unlikely at this juncture. But as Mr. King said, there is no funding mechanism for increases. So if and when they come, it will certainly be embraced, but they aren't going to come soon. There's a lot of work to be done and we have got to address our cash flow and our fund balance between now and then. So almost finished here. I just want to segue from where we were last year. Last year, we called out a fiscal concern and a need for a fiscal turnaround, if you will. And we set out not only the budget for this year, this was in May of last year, 2022, and then it was approved in June of 2022. We set out both an approved budget, which had a 2.25% tax rate attached, and we set out a turnaround plan for the five out years comprising the rolling eight. And we felt reasonably comfortable that that would constitute a turnaround plan and that's the context we've been working with. But something else happened and it has materially changed our fiscal outlook. And really in a nutshell, it's the following three things. Special education costs have increased dramatically. I believe $1.2 million is the number Ms. Martin is affirming of the latest analysis of what it increased just in one year alone. Cyber charter costs continue to be very, very high, much higher than we predicted. And then last, but not least, the general inflationary impact have accumulated together to really create a risk about our operating fund balances and our ability to sustain as we look out. So to recap this, our latest forecasting projects a six-year shortfall, shortfall of $19.7 million. That shortfall equates to an average annual gap of $3.3 million. The current '23, '24 budget working draft, which assumes a tax increase of 4%, by the way, yields only a $650,000 surplus and our broad math says it needs to be closer to $3.9 million. And that surplus is needed to absorb this major inflationary impact that has gotten substantially worse over the last 12 months. And also to mitigate our immediate operating fund cash concerns. The operating fund is not exactly cash, but there is a correlation there. So sorry for all the details, but I want to set that stage so no one's surprised as we get into further board dialogue and as the public comes along on the journey. Transparency is critically important in all areas. And certainly when we're talking about major financial implications for the district, we have a duty to take care of the district and ensure it's sustainable. And right now we have serious concerns. We had them last year. They accumulated over many years, but they have gotten much more acute because of the realities, the economic realities of the last 12 months. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strickler. Any questions? Okay, with that, we are now at number 17. This is our second period of citizen comment. Rules remain the same, except this time we will have a 45-minute cap on this. I would ask if we could just begin, I know there was someone who came up about the same time as Ms. Walker. I want to be, Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, sir. I want to be respectful since you stood up. So we will start with you and then, sorry.
No, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Marie Daniano. I am a parent of a graduate. I'm also a citizen of Central York and I am a former school board member. I'd like to talk to the Policy 105.1 and 105.4. I sat through the policy meeting earlier and you made it very clear tonight that going forward, that that will be for curriculum material, not library material that's used on an individual basis, right? You know, kid wants to take the book out or use it for resources. I understand that going forward, but it was also made clear at the policy meeting that you used 105.1 and 105.4 to make the decision to ban the current two books out of the library. It seems to me there's some inconsistency in that because we used a policy and a form for something that it really wasn't designed for. Also, when you look at 105.4, that form, it allows the opportunity for a parent to request that the book be removed from their child only. I don't understand why that wasn't done. I don't understand why a parent or a guardian can challenge material for anybody else's students, anybody else's children. It's one thing if you restrict it for your own child, but to restrict it for other children, I have a problem with that. And when I spoke with administration last week, I don't know that it was abundantly clear to them that there was that option as well, to just restrict it from the individual child in question. So in light of that, I would like to ask the board to vote to overturn the committee's decision to ban the material for everybody and just ban it for that individual student. I would also like to say that I read in the paper, one of our board members, Jody Grothe, commented to the paper that it was a fictitious ban. The definition of fictitious in Webster's says that it is something that is made up or pretend. There's nothing made up or pretend about what occurred. The books were pulled from our library. They were banned from our library. They went one step further, not just banned from our library, but there's the interlibrary loan program where students should be able to go and borrow a book through our library from a public library like Martin. And that right has been taken away as well. So it's not fictitious. It's a real live ban. Doesn't come any liver. So here's a dictionary. Maybe it's in the library, maybe it isn't. But you can take that away and share it amongst yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you folks are doing well tonight. My name is Noah Rick. I'm a taxpayer. I'm also a 2013 alumnus of Central. And as of January, I am also an alumnus of Johns Hopkins University with my master's in writing, a concentration in fiction. And I do want to make a quick sidebar that I wouldn't have even made it into that program without the love, help and support of a teacher from Century York High School, Patty Jackson, who helped guide me through that process and helped me with that. So huge shout out to her. Thank you so much because I have had a great time on that program. I mentioned this, my master's, because a large portion of my master's was spent reading. To learn how to write well, you must be well-read. And the content I read, both fiction and non, was at times extremely graphic, shocking, nauseating and abhorrent. But it wasn't written that way for shock and awe, like a B-movie script. It was written that way for a different reason. I was relieved when the unceremonious book ban was of unrevealed materials was overturned a year or so ago. Hearing the removal of Push and another book off the HS library shelves disappointed me immeasurably. It would be one thing if the removal was made with the consensus of the ELA teachers and public transparency on specifically why it was removed. But alas, it was decided by administrators behind closed doors. I wonder, is Mein Kampf still on the shelves? It was when I was in school. I was doing a report on Germany for Global Studies and looked to see if it was available, just out of curiosity. Surely the pathetic muelings of a self-absorbed fascist is also subject to such extensive discretion by this committee, but I doubt it will and I don't want it to. The reason these texts are in school libraries across the nation and the world are because they hold the same thing, humanity. At its most painful, at its most evil, at its most ruthless and unforgiving, texts that disturb us are in a way the most human. They are important because they give us a vital tool, information. To see what Sapphire experience in a novel is horrifying, yes, but it's safe. You can deconstruct it and you can work through it by reading it. The alternative is much worse. We can develop empathy by reading. And with Mein Kampf, we can use it to understand how self-absorbed and supremacist Hitler was. I also want to make sure that this does not get twisted. I am comparing these works because of their difficult material. I am not comparing the authors themselves. Just want to make that clear. These works are difficult, yes, but they can help us see the world more clearly. And to take the ability to see the world clearly away from parents and students, to me, is unforgivable. If we do not first see how dark the world is, how can we ever hope to bring it light? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mia Tora Kielis. I'm in the ninth grade and my parents are taxpayers to this district. I'm also in the Club Peru, which is Panthers Anti-Racism Union. I'm here today because of a specific book that has been banned. The book is called Push. Your reasoning for removing this book is that includes abuse and sexual content in it. According to the superintendent, it lacks quality literary structure and standards. And he also said that it doesn't meet the standard of development appropriateness for the independent reading material. Now let's talk about books that you have reviewed but haven't felt the need to ban. Currently, my class is reading Of Mice and Men by John Steinback. As you may already know, it involves sexual, racial and violent content, but yet you didn't ban the book. The novel Sold by Patricia McCormick involves child trafficking, but yet you didn't feel the need to ban it. Both of these books involve inappropriate content, but you didn't ban them as you did with Push. This hypocritical mindset amongst the board has to stop. These books that you are banning might not be important to you, but they are important to us. Books like Push teach students things that the school isn't teaching us. We need to learn and experience things other than math and science. We need to feel and imagine things because this school is no longer a school, but a jail. This book banning has to stop because we as high schoolers are on our way to becoming adults like you. Books are magical things that can motivate you and can teach you many things. These books that you are banning have meaning and they have a point to get across. By banning books, you are silencing these authors and what they have to say and you are silencing their experiences. We will stay ignorant because you banning these books full of truth is gatekeeping the knowledge we seek and desperately need. These books tell us about the real world and how to act, while school wants the students to follow the leader instead of becoming one. You remove books with diversity because you are afraid that we will become diverse. These books make us aware of things that the school is trying to hold us back from. These books let us explore the knowledge we seek and are interested in. The books that you are banning are the books that open the students' minds and show them that they are not alone. See, me personally, I write poems and I share them in teaching classes. Isn't that crazy? At the age of 13, I felt alone. I felt like no one was there for me. I was constantly walked over and people ignored me. I always felt like the second choice and that led me to blocking everyone who actually cared out, so I read. Reading made me feel safe and made me feel like I wasn't alone. More specifically on what I read, I read poems. My favorite poem is I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings by Maya Angelou. In fact, I love that poem so much that I have it beside my bed and I read it each night. If you have read it, then you know how powerful that poem is. The words alone are meaningless, but together they are powerful. They have meaning. I'm going to say a quote from the poem Caged Bird by Maya Angelou. "The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown but long for still, and his tune is heard on the distant hill, for the caged bird sings of freedom." The reason why I brought up this poem is because students are the caged bird. You see, opportunity is flying right by us and we can see it, but you are the cage holding us back from proceeding. You lock up our minds and expect us to stay quiet, but since we are a caged bird, all we can do is sing. See, one thing I learned about this district is that you guys love to ban stuff. You ban us from seeing the big picture because it's easier to teach followers rather than leaders. This is coming from deep inside my heart. The heart of a student has been in this district since kindergarten. You aren't the student. You aren't a warden. You are corrupt. And I'll be caught behind bars before I say that I am proud to be a Panther. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, school board. My name is Favorite Gabriel. Not only am I a junior at Century York High School, I'm the president of the Panther Cultural Celebratory Affiliation, which is the culture club that Caitlin Munsky, Laura Lowjohn, Sienna Embry-Banks, Scarlett Lenz, and myself founded. In a usual sense, I would speak out from all of our points of view, but today I will speak on mine and mine alone. The feelings I felt the day that I found out that the book Push, authored by Sapphire, was taken out of the high school library due to Policy 105.1 and 105.4 is unexplainable, but I will try my best. Anger, annoyance, stress, hurt, infuriation, all these emotions and none positive. There are countless reasons why these emotions arose after those news, but I will share the two main ones. To begin, a book was banned that stars a main character that looks like me. While I am not able to relate to the character specifically, I can relate generally. As I see all of you guys sitting on this board, I can say that not one of you guys know what it's like to be a black female teenager in high school. So to find a book that relates to you and can hold the same feelings is a different kind of relaxation and a safe zone. The second reason is due to Policy 105.4, a student was not able to be on the committee that took away this astonishing book, which to me sounds laughable, considering the fact that the book being taken away will affect the students and only the students. So why can we not have a say in what we read? Why is it that the board and this committee believes that us students are not able to have our own mind, our own voice? The book was banned because it doesn't match the possible learning experience that is not appropriate for high school teens to be reading. Does it not match the learning experience, or does it not match your standard of a sensitive, non-colored student walking to the library should have in their possession? Is it too much? Can you not stand to feel the utterance that Sapphire shared? Simple, don't read it. But do not take it away from the students who actually can get past the blocked view of what Sapphire said and what she expressed. You are completely correct, Mr. Strickler. Transparency is completely important going forward, but apparently transparency to the students for the books that they will be getting strength from is nonexistent. A quote from Push, which was previously read by Ms. Jackson, but I will repeat it again so that its statement doesn't fly over your head. "I want to say I am somebody. I want to say on subway, TV, movie loud. I see the pink faces in suits look over top of my head. I watch myself disappear in their eyes, their tesses. I talk loud, but still I don't exist. Central celebrates and strives for diversity for everyone." Is this actually what it is, or was to an extent forgotten in the end?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Low.
Good evening. We do have a variety of views here, which is one of the strengths of our country, of course. Mr. King, you know, I always have to give you jazz about it. I was very upset that you hurried through the legislative committee information. Okay, appreciate if you go a little. I call it my Samanex. Okay, yeah, all good, all good. As our beautiful district has once again been attacked in the media over the last few days, I'm disheartened at the fact that only half the story is once again presented. The focus of the articles is over the book Push being removed from our high school. The message and ideas of the book Push are what has been deemed inappropriate by our district's standards due to inappropriate content, and yet it's being hailed as a removal of a black author's book. And no issues with the content or very rarely are ever discussed within the media. The descriptive content of the book is based around a young child being physically repeatedly violated, raped, and beaten by her father. Why is there not outrage that it was ever available in the first place? Why is there not outrage that we are glorifying the abuse of a child when the activists sit in this very seat and demand its return to the library? I for one appreciate the removal of such materials. We've had our children in this district sit at this very table and detail their own abuse, and at that time, it was considered horrific. Now there's a demand for the return of the same acts against a child to be returned to the hands of our children. Parents have every availability to use online sources to provide this book to their children should they wish to do so. The public library is also available for all your reading needs. This book has no educational value and I fully support its removal. I'm sure there are many other books we need to review for content. The quote rating system that is coming to the district is a wonderful idea and will help parents make appropriate decisions for their children. The second book removed, called Court of Mist and Fury, descriptively describes a female having sex with a half-man, half-beast. Why is that appropriate for a school setting? It has no educational value and teaches our children that sex with animals is now acceptable? Why is this book not a topic for our local reports? Perhaps because this book was written by a white author and doesn't warrant front-page news. The teachers who call themselves activists and proudly encourage the teardown of our district should be reprimanded. Why do you work here if you cannot lift the district up and support what's best for the students? You promote a book of rape and abuse, but you don't come here to voice concern that three of our elementary schools have been flagged for math and ELA scores falling below state standards. Where is the outrage over the education that prepares our children for life to be productive members of society? Sexually inappropriate content does not prepare our students to hold down a job, run a business, be successful in a trade, build something, et cetera. Our focus should be on an education and leave the rest to the parents to provide to their child on their own time. We've seen this, devised this long enough. Elections are coming. It's the only time we see people showing up in outrage, and our district always pays the price for the slander. We need to unite, not look, to turn these board meetings into a Jerry Springer show. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Eller.
Shava Eller, taxpayer. I remember when the Bible was banned in public school curriculum. It was done by the Supreme Court and it was unconstitutional because it was not legislated law. I also remember when the Ten Commandments were removed from the public school classrooms. Again, it was unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Tonight, we're debating over banning porno books in school curriculum. We're calling education. Maybe we should let the Supreme Court decide if pornography is constitutionally legal in public schools. I want to thank the administration and the board for removing inappropriate and sexual materials in school library. I'd also like to say thank you for protecting our children from mixed biological sexes in private spaces. The diversity and LGBTQ activists want to transform American society by promoting equity and inclusion in school policies and curriculum. What is diversity? It's discrimination against God and the Ten Commandments. What is equity? It's a removal of capitalism to promote global environmentalism for climate change. What is inclusion? Inclusion is indoctrination for gender and immoral sexuality. This includes transforming American academics into global curriculum. Judeo-Christian culture into multiculturalism. Civil rights into human rights. Equal rights into equity. Critical thinking into critical theory. Biological sex into intersex. Moral values into social and emotional indoctrination. Biblical beliefs into hate speech. The goal: Turn America under God, turn a nation under God into a nation without God. We have clubs that promote racial division, sexual confusion, and hatred of America's past. How do diversity, equity, and inclusion take the place of basic reading, writing, and math? Why are we promoting social curriculum instead of academics? It's because we had administrators and school board members that gave the diversity club the authority of library curriculum. The ISTI standards, the American Library, and the Digital Citizenship all promote DEI. This is an assignment from the Digital Citizenship. How can you create a community culture in which hate speech is unacceptable? They're referring to conservative Christian beliefs as hate speech. DEI is discrimination against American people who believe we are endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights for life, to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The agenda is to remove biblical beliefs, the traditional family, and the government under God. This is global indoctrination. Our children should not be sexualized by teachers. Our children should not get counseling against the social and political beliefs of parents. Our children should not be taught to hate America's religious heritage. I pray that confused students who are seeking for truth will know they are loved by the God who created them. The only way to happiness is to obey God's commandments. Everyone seems to fear the word "book ban." I respect schools that ban resources that are inappropriate for children. Freedom is a God-given right. When we remove God, we remove our right to be free. Do not fear the media more than you fear God. Do what is right for our children, keep America under God, and ban pornographic materials and ban the diversity club who is causing this. I have a brochure I picked up for you who don't understand what the ISTI standards are and how the UN has taken over the curriculum in public schools and what their agenda is. In the library curriculum, you are going to be passing this when it comes up for vote, the ISTI standards, and they're explained in these brochures, and I would like you all to understand them. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Joel Falkmer. I'm a parent, taxpayer, resident, and all this stuff. Everybody says, I live in the district, pay my taxes, do all that stuff. We're hearing a lot of arguments tonight, as we know. We're hearing a lot of discussion, some of which is faithful to what is best for our students and considering what it is that we need to do to best be able to implement certain changes if needed in a fair way and a just way. We're also hearing a lot of glorification of terms, including saying that we're glorifying rape or bestiality or pornography or things like that, which has not been done in what I have experienced here tonight or what I've heard. And to call someone's rape as pornography is pretty disgusting. I sent a letter earlier today to the board about the policies, 105, 109, and everything in between that's being discussed and was on the agenda for tonight. But I also wanted to just mention tonight that one of the reasons that we need to have resources available to students and not even to the point where we're blocking what they can get from the public library is that typically, at least according to the CDC, many children wait to report or never report child sexual abuse, and I'm quoting their website. "Therefore, the numbers below likely underestimate the true impact of the problem. Although estimates vary across studies, the research shows about 1 in 4 girls and 1 in 13 boys in the United States experience child sexual abuse. Someone known and trusted by the child or child's family members perpetuates 91% of child sexual abuse." And for those who like economics, the total lifetime economic burden of child abuse in the United States, and this is a quote, or this is a stat from 2015 on their website currently, was estimated at least $9.3 billion. So if we like to talk about inflation, you can say it's a lot higher than that now. So what are consequences of this? Again, they share: sexually transmitted infections, physical injuries, chronic conditions later in life, such as heart disease, obesity, and cancer. Examples of mental health consequences include depression, post-traumatic stress disorder. Examples of behavioral consequences include substance use, misuse, including opioid misuse, risky sexual behaviors, and I can go on and on as this continues down their website. It is important for our children to have the opportunity to learn and to hear other people's experiences of how they have dealt with these things in their lives because over a quarter of our students have experienced it, according to the CDC's numbers. To pretend like it doesn't exist or try to say that we're going to protect our kids from certain topics by getting rid of certain books is only helping to push these people back towards secrecy. This will not allow them to have and feel empowered to speak out, even at the point where they want to explore it themselves before they share it with anybody else. And just to comment on other recent comments. As an ordained Lutheran pastor, I appreciate what I see in the Bible being taught and shared throughout, not only in the Hebrew scriptures, the Old Testament, but also in the teaching of Jesus in the New Testament. That shows what it is to include the marginalized, to welcome those who are normally pushed to the side, hated and discriminated against, treated as property, or not even worth being a human. Jesus is the perfect example of what it means to welcome people in who have otherwise been kicked out by the establishment, by the government rulers, by religious leaders. This idea that God is banned from school is something that is not possible, for God is everywhere, if you truly believe that. This idea that we are somehow harming our kids and destroying what our country was built upon is, again, ridiculous because it is my responsibility as a parent to be teaching those things. We hear about parental rights, and that's exactly what we're here to argue about tonight. Does one parent have the right to override my rights as a parent? Or do we need things in place to make sure that if a parent wants something restricted for their child, they can do it, but they do not have the right to restrict it for everyone else's? But to try to pull religion on this is a joke. We all know that Christian nationalism is a heresy. Jesus wasn't white. He didn't speak King James English. He wasn't a true American hero. But instead, he was born into oppression. He was born into poverty. And so if we want to speak about those things, then let's consider all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falkmer. Good evening.
Hi, Kara Kowalski, taxpayer. Graduated from Central in 1998, and I have a bunch of family in the district. I'm just going to read two laws here. Section 1470 of Title 18 United States Code prohibits any individual from knowingly transferring or attempting to transfer obscene matter using the US mail or any means or facility of interstate or foreign commerce to a minor under 16 years of age. Convicted offenders face fines and imprisonment for up to 10 years. In addition, section 1466A of Title 18 US United States Code makes it illegal for any person to knowingly produce, distribute, receive, or possess with intent to transfer or distribute visual representations such as drawings, cartoons, or paintings that appear to depict minors engaged in sexually explicit conduct and are deemed obscene. There've been some pretty nice passages read from this book, but here's some real stuff from the book of why so many people have a problem with this book.
Again, I will just remind you, if it goes into a vulgar area, we're going to stop.
Okay. This time, I know mama know. Mm-hmm, she know. She bring him to me. I ain't crazy. That stinky hoe, give me to him. Probably that's what he require to fuck her, some of me. Got to where he just come in my room.
All right, next time, we're going to recess.
All right. So, okay, so if this is too vulgar for adults, why is it anywhere near schools? No one is saying it doesn't happen, that incest isn't an issue that far too many children face on a daily basis. Just sit in any recovery meeting and you will meet people who have faced all forms of sexual abuse, including incest. I have many friends that have experienced that. But it does not belong in schools and only serves to sexualize our children so that they have a greater chance of being abused themselves in the future. Parents can't possibly know about all the inappropriate books available. It is the job of the administration, teachers, and everyone else involved in the school district to protect the children in our district. Thank you.
We have about 14 minutes left. Is there anyone else? Sir, did you want to?
Sorry, I've already spoken, so if you want to, go ahead.
And we'll make sure there's enough time, sir. Good evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Edward Covington. I live in the district. I'm a taxpayer. First of all, I want to congratulate the board for taking the required steps to impose community standards in this district. The truth is that all pornography law, at the end of the day, in SCOTUS decisions, district court decisions around the country and in the states, leave it as a matter of community interpretation. There is a great deal of material that I have seen in this discussion of some of these books that I guarantee you can get you convicted in thousands of counties across this country. So anybody who is distributing that should read the Pennsylvania statutes because distribution qualifies you for conviction of a felony. And every teacher who wants to promote it and everybody else, you may have gotten away with it to this point, but at some point, the tide could change, and you could find yourself shockingly convicted because the statutes are there to put you in jail. We, as a nation, have become the most prosperous and advanced on the planet in history, and that's because we have chosen to establish boundaries across the board for a great many areas that we consider critical to developing a responsible future citizenry. We don't allow people under 18 to acquire guns, even though it's their constitutional right to have it. We don't allow people under 18 to go and acquire medical marijuana, even though it might be their right to acquire it. We have restrictions on what people can do with their kids in a movie. At the end of the day, I understand that parents might be upset that it doesn't meet their particular norms, then their argument is wrong in this respect. If they're not happy with the norms imposed under this district, go create your own school. Create a charter school. We've already heard from Mr. Strickler tonight that your cyber school expenses are skyrocketing in this district. That's because parents are starting to flee. Don't expect that to reverse. If you reverse course on a decision that you made in accordance with the policy standards that you set up, stand your ground, understand that it was the right thing to do, and the people in this district will back you all the way. This was not a racist decision, and I'm sorry, but I haven't heard anybody present absolute evidence that they can't go out in this county today or tomorrow and buy this book. If you want to buy this book and take it home for your kids, it's still your privilege to be able to do that. If you need a link from Amazon, just Google it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening again.
Hello, once again. Benjamin Walker, I'm a parent. Just want to respond to a couple of the comments, which have been made referring to the idea that if you distribute Push by Sapphire or stock it in your libraries, you are somehow in violation of federal law. That perception would be erased if you actually read and understood the replicable federal law, including Supreme Court decisions on what counts as obscenity. The gold standard for that being the Millet test of obscenity, which is a three-pronged test. The first prong being whether contemporary community standards consider the work as a whole, I'll emphasize, as a whole, appeals to the purian interest. In other words, is promoting sexual gratification for the sake of sensationalism or with no other purpose in mind. The second prong of that is whether it violates any state or federal regulations, if I remember correctly, which, once again, refers to things that have no literary value whatsoever. The third prong is whether a work as a whole is considered on a national scale, mind you, to lack political, scientific, artistic, or literary value. The original test was intended to have that third prong be national. The first ruling didn't go with that, but then later, the Supreme Court affirmed in 1987, it should be considered a national standard. In other words, first, you have to determine whether contemporary community standards find something obscene. You can't do that by just talking to the most closed-minded, easily offended members of a community. You've got to try to find out if there's a consensus on this. Guess what? You're doing it right here. There's no consensus on this. You can't make a community standard finding that something is obscene. Secondly, because this book has obvious literary value, because it's been awarded by groups like the Penn Faulkner Foundation, because it's been awarded awards by the NAACP, because Tyler Perry and Oprah Winfrey managed to turn it into an Oscar-winning for adaptive screenplay film that had huge cultural impacts because of its artistic value, you will not be able to meet that third standard either. And I will remind you, because it is a three-pronged test under the Miller standard, which is the legal standard you would want, you have to meet all three. If you don't, it does not legally qualify as obscene content. Anyway, next time you want to bring that up, maybe check the federal laws and understand them. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name's Amanda Hill. You heard from my husband earlier, Jamie. We are parents of a student at one of the elementary schools. I wasn't planning on speaking, so this won't be very polished, but I felt like I needed to speak. I want to build off of the comment that my husband made, that the books that will be challenged and pulled from the shelves for everyone in a rating system that still seems very ambiguous to me, based on someone else's standards, will inherently be racist, homophobic, and transphobic. I want to point out that women of color, specifically African-American women, are disproportionately at risk of sexual violence. According to the American Psychological Association, 1 in 4 black girls will be sexually abused before the age of 18. Let that sink in, 1 in 4 girls. The books that have been challenged and reviewed per Dr. Aiken's email were three books written by women, two of which are women of color. The two books by women of color both address sexual abuse, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Luckily, one of those books you deemed should stay, but it illustrates that the types of books, the people who write these books, and the experiences of these books that represent girls in our school district who may need the resources, who might not have parents that can go and buy a book off a shelf and give it to them, or who might be curious because they don't want to tell anyone that they've been abused or raped. This might be their only place to find the resources and help that they need. And you are going to have books that are challenged repeatedly that will disproportionately affect them because sexual abuse disproportionately affects them. The system in place, because of these facts, will inherently be racist. You are creating a system of racism. I just ask that you consider that. Look at the books that were challenged in the past. I don't even know what they are. But I'm sure you will see a pattern emerge because in three books, it's already started. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one last comment. That's fine.
Hi again. My name is Mandy Wang, and I'm a junior at Century Park High School. Just to be clear, I'm an atheist. My mom is Christian, but religion has not played a role in my education. Also, I believe I am the only Asian in this room, and growing up, it was scary for me sometimes to walk into a room and be the only Asian person, to be the minority. However, I have found haven in books. I believe that as we as a community need to ask the students what they think, not necessarily the parents. I think as a student that the issues in these books need to be discussed. I have a question for everybody here. These topics that disgust you so much, what makes you believe that you can completely hide your child from these topics? We assume that every child these days have a phone, and it is very likely that they have already been exposed to these issues, if not worse. I say this to demonstrate that simply banning a book will not completely hide your child from these topics. As the individual spoke earlier about how reading is a huge part of learning, I wanted to discuss my own personal experience with this. I recently won a gold medal for Harvard writing contest, and I'm going to states for another prestigious writing competition. In both of these writing competitions, I derive my personal knowledge to write the papers that helped me with these awards. In order to write a good paper, from what I've learned, you need to read to grow as an individual, to reach your fullest potential. I wrote about underrepresented issues in hopes of bringing awareness to topics that people continually ignore or do not act with. I say this because I find that in the book Push, the same thing is happening with underrepresented issues and ideas being discussed, but people within our community have decided to silence these books' messages. If you, as a parent, decide that your child does not want to read the book, that is fine. I respect your decision. But for you to speak on behalf of other children, for you to speak for me, who are you to do that? I speak for myself, and I believe that this book should be kept for the messages that it can bring comfort in our students and in my classmates. If it does the opposite, in your opinion, then simply choose not to pick up the book and not read it. I may only be a child, but my voice matters just as much as any others. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move on to number 18, board comment. Governing board members who wish to comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Strickler.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciated the comments on the book Push from last meeting and this meeting. Our job as a board directors is to listen and listen well and be as fair and balanced as we can. As Dr. Aiken alluded to earlier in the meeting, these are difficult topics, and civil debate and persuasive arguments is what this should be about. And I've been listening. I will continue to listen, and I want to just express gratitude for the dialogue, the civil dialogue. I believe it's our responsibility as board members to also distill things down to their essential crux, and there are a lot of factors here. But after two meetings and lots of dialogue, I just ask that we not lose sight of the following five items. I've tried to kind of distill it down in my mind, five items that I just want to be sure, I think that are facts, that I want to be sure, don't get lost in translation. And again, there are lots of other considerations here, but I think these five are something that I would encourage be a takeaway here for folks. Number one is, obviously, the district must have an ability to discern age appropriateness and academic relevance and resources, both within its library and within its classroom. I think most people would agree. And maybe a little different method or manner of doing that, but that's a core premise of what we're here to do. Number two, the district is a K through 12 teaching institution, and the reality is it's not a community library, or a bookstore, or a book publisher, or a literary arts store. Discernment and age appropriateness and academic relevance is not book banning. Students may always read whatever they please on their own. Number three, certain voices and media have disingenuously played this topic of the book Push as a racial or diversity issue. It is not. It is solely about sexual content inappropriate for independent reading by young students, so inappropriate, we couldn't hear it as a board tonight. The recent action with respect, number four, the recent action with respect to the book Push was taken by a committee that's independent of the district's board, comprised of two teachers, one librarian, and two administrators, who followed the current version, the best version that we had, as we know from the policy committee earlier. At that time, they followed that policy to the letter. And then, number five, since the first day at this district, Dr. Aiken has been working diligently to bring us together and to charter a collaborative course wherever possible. His latest ideas are aimed at offering new options to respect and balance parents' wishes with the library rating system that would work in conjunction with the latest ideas from the policy meeting at 5 o'clock today, which is bringing more clarity. These are difficult topics, but let's not lose sight of some core facts along the way. And I want to just finish with some gratitude. On balance, this board has an excellent collaborative working relationship with our administration, and we've been working as one to focus on serving our students. And I think we've done a pretty good job of exercising civil discourse and partnership as a board. I want us to work together and stay on the facts. Stay on the facts and stay on unifying us together to do the best work for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strickler. Yes, Ms. Rick.
I would suggest, if anyone wasn't able to attend the committee meeting, to go back and watch that because I feel that we made an important distinction tonight about separating 105.1 and 109 as policies regarding instructional materials, and came to the conclusion that we need a policy specifically geared toward library materials, and I think that's very important. So I appreciate that. One of the things that I am strongly in favor of in a policy like that would be transparency. I think everyone in the community has the right to know which books are being challenged so that if you have strong feelings about those books, you can speak about them before a conclusion is reached. The administrators have already admitted that finding a way, finding a vetting process, finding a committee is going to be extremely difficult. So if we've got committee input on that, on how to make it fair, that would be most welcomed. I would also like to say, it is important, and we often hear from students, and I'm so appreciative that students come to these meetings and spend their evenings here, I know they're exhausted, and give us their opinions and their perspectives. Students have constitutional rights, just like we do as adults. And when we do remove something from circulation, that is possibly a violation of student rights. I think it is 100% fair for a parent to say, "I don't want my child to have anything to do with this book or this resource." 100%. Look out for your kids. But I don't think it's fair to say that it's not okay for other kids. So I think this is a process. It's going to be very, very ongoing. We need input, but I think that transparency piece is the most important. And on a different topic, I would like to congratulate the students who participated in and ran the CYHS Mini-Thon and raised so much money for such a good cause, childhood leukemia. They did a great job. They had so much fun, and congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rick. Coming right to you, Ms. Crane. Thank you, Ms. Rick. I was going to say the same thing, over $127,000. So that's awesome. No, no, no. You could have, hey, you could have said it. That's awesome. I agree, so thank you for mentioning that. Ms. Crane?
I was going to say the same thing. I do want to thank everybody that spoke. I know it is a difficult position to get in front of a large group of people behind you, in front of you. I still remember the very first time I ever spoke in front of the board, holding paper and shaking the whole time. I know it's not easy, so I do thank you for participating, and I thank the board for working together to try to come up with the best solutions possible for our students and for the district. But also, on the same note of them, Mini-Thon was a fantastic event this weekend. There were six of us from the board, I know, that I saw at the event on Saturday. Tons of kids and teachers, administrators raised, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't get it wrong, $127,620.23. And the roar that went up in that gym when those numbers were raised up above our heads was phenomenal. It was great to be a part of that. The students did an awesome job. The teachers that led that did an awesome job. Kids were very respectful and it was just, it was a great day. I know there were a couple of injuries along the way. I'm glad Ms. Allison was there at one point to bandage somebody up that got a finger caught in a rope. I didn't really want to look at it, so I'm glad I wasn't the one having to do with that. But it was, it was a phenomenal way that our high school students came together to raise support for children with childhood leukemia. So that was, that was phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Mostyn.
So a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. No, no, no. It's absolutely fine. But I just wanted to, I just feel like, because I know a lot of you won't go back and watch the meeting. I, it's perfectly reasonable to not want to go back and sit and watch a meeting on live stream. But I think it's very important to understand that I think we, as a committee of six, so two-thirds of the board sit on this policy and curriculum committee meeting, committee. And we discussed the flaws in the current, in the current policies as they stand. We determined that we absolutely need a new policy that addresses library books that are not used in curriculum. We also recognized and agreed that the ARs that were used by the committee that judged, I'm sorry, that assessed and evaluated the books that were challenged did not meet, did not really jive with what is required to challenge a book that is not used in curriculum. So we basically determined that the AR, so if you go back and you're looking at AR and you see AR 105.4, that administrative regulation is not going to be in use anymore. So I want you to understand, don't go back and look at that and say, well, but it said this and that. It was used because it was all that we had available. It was what we had available at the time. There isn't, there isn't an administrative regulation to review library books not used in curriculum. So in lieu of that, Dr. Aiken did what he, what he could do within the policies that were available. He formed a committee, as it says in that AR, but that AR is not going to be used going forward. We're going to create a new policy about library book review. We're going, the administrative is going to create new ARs for that new policy. So I want that to be clear because I feel like there is some misunderstanding that still exists. I also want to make it clear, and Mr. Strickler did speak to this, the board was not involved in these decisions. And so a lot of people spoke to the board that we were the ones that decided to remove the book. We actually didn't find out about it pretty much until you guys did. So it was not something that was, that we were involved in. We did not know about it. And I think that's where a lot of the transparency discussion has come in. The administrative administration has said they are learning too. It is a learning process. They have, they now understand that maybe there should have been more transparency with the board and with the community on these items. And so I don't think that's going to happen going forward. I think it's another growth area and I think it's something that we're going to all learn from. So that's another thing. The board was not aware that these books were even being challenged and we just found out about them about a couple of weeks ago. So I want to make that very clear. And the last thing I just wanted to say because I admit that I have not yet read the entire book Push. I have read lots of reviews of it. I understand the trajectory of the story and I plan to read it. But I do agree with a lot of the things Ms. Rick said and others said, which is that what is right for my child and what is right for your child are maybe the same, but maybe very different. And what will help another child and will help my child are very different things. And so for any judgment to be made for what my child can handle, what my child can read and understand and grow from and not be traumatized by, may be very different. So as a parent, you absolutely have the right to make a choice for your own child. I 100% respect that and you are always, always, always able to advocate for your child and their rights, just as I am able to advocate for my child's rights. And so I will continue to do that with this book and the other books that come up for challenge along the way. And I did also want to just quote a part of a Supreme Court decision made in a 1982 Supreme Court case called Island Tree School District versus Pico. It's a 1982 decision. In the majority decision, which basically prevented books that wanted, that were banned from that school district, they were brought back, they were, it was, they were banned in 1975, books like Kurt Vonnegut's Slaughterhouse-Five and some others. So it was more politically based. It wasn't really, it wasn't the same type of book, but it was a different time. It was like nearly 50 years ago. Part of the majority decision, I just want to read this because it's very applicable and timely to our discussions tonight. Quote, and this is majority opinion, like I said. While petitioners might rightfully claim absolute discretion in matters of curriculum by reliance upon their duty to inculcate community values in schools, petitioner's reliance upon that duty is misplaced where they attempt to extend their claim of absolute discretion beyond the compulsory environment of the classroom into the school library and the regime of voluntary inquiry that there holds sway. So my interpretation of that is that petitioners can claim discretion, meaning the administration can claim discretion on matters of curriculum, but when it comes to the school library where there's voluntary inquiry and things that are not necessarily ever going to be used in the classroom, there's a different level of assessment and a different level of examination that should take place. And so with that, I'll say goodnight and thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.